To call the meeting order for June 12, 2024, we'll start with the pledge. Dilegence to the power of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, one of the requirements is that the flag is at the part of the entrance. That was good, there you go.
Fire department presentation. Come on up, Wayne. Good evening. Thanks for taking the time out tonight for this presentation. Those on the call, you want a bookie, please? We know you got it. Alright, so I'm here tonight, the crew behind me, we went to a call. I'm gonna read a letter, kind of give some background and go from there. But this is something that doesn't normally happen very often, and I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the crew on the call. To the select board town administrator. On Wednesday, May 15th, at 18:34 hours, an 911 call was received by the dispatch center for emergency, medical emergency at 1060 Route 1 and Willie's Elbroom. Emergency dispatchers performed their emergency medical dispatch protocols to begin medical care. At 18:37 hours, active fire rescue was dispatched requesting an ambulance. Ambulance one responded with the duty crew consisting of firefighter paramedic Rinnicky and firefighter McCoy. At 18:38 hours, they arrived on location at 18:39 hours and were updated by the dispatch that CPR was beginning, but bystanders on the scene. A1 confirmed that this was a cardiac arrest and CPR was continued. A1 requested a tone for additional manpower from the department to respond. And due to the call and not many people prior responding, ambulance and an engine manpower was started out of Sanford. York County Sheriff's deputies also assisted with CPR on the scene. CPR continued and crews began to set up equipment. A cardiac monitor with AED pads was placed and determined there was a shockable rhythm. The shock was administered, CPR continued. A mechanical CPR device called the Lucas was put in place and delivered continuous, highly accurate chest compressions. IV access was established by the paramedic to administer medications. After continuous CPR, multiple defibrillation shocks and medications, the crew was able to get the return of spontaneous circulation, which got the pulse back on the patient. Patient was loaded in the ambulance and transported to the hospital. Later that night, he was flown by medical helicopter to the Maine Medical Center of Polwood. Following medical care there, a couple of days later, the patient was able to talk on his own to his family, was awake and talking. This type of call is very labor intensive and critical to manage. This responsibility falls on the team to work together and be professional. However, as the highest emergency medical licensed person on the scene, firefighter paramedic Rinnicky is ultimately responsible. Her calm and professional manner kept the team focused and on task that needed to be completed. I want to thank each member who responded to this call. This call consisted of department veterans and relatively new members. Your dedication and highly trained abilities led to a positive outcome on this call. I also want to take the time to thank the community for its continued support of the department, ensuring we have skilled staff and quality equipment to perform when called upon. I had multiple members of the Sanford Fire Department express their praise for the crew on this call. As the fire chief, I am pleased to have crews like this continue to work and do their best to serve our community day in, day out. This is the crew behind us that was on the call. I have, the certificate reads one of you. The certificate reads Meritorious Service Award. This certifies that with the individual's name in recognition of distinguished service and professional contributions to the Town of Acton on May 15, 2024. For your service in the performance of your duties, incident number 2024-259, given this in the Town of Acton on this day of June, signed by me.
Chief, may I suggest maybe they come up here so people at home can actually put a face with the name?
Name off who they are as you hand them up, please.
Can I see it?
Yeah, yeah.
Firefighter paramedic Rinnicky. Firefighter McCoy. Firefighter Cole. Captain Harold Smith, former fire chief of the department. Wrong here before me. Captain, wrong again. You got the photo? Tomorrow at 3:30?
Yeah, do you want to let everybody know?
Tomorrow at 3:30, I think you've all been told, but if you haven't, he's going to be at the fire station tomorrow.
So this individual is well, awake, talking back with his family, and he's coming to meet up with the crew tomorrow at 3:30. So that's for these guys, the two people that started the CPR, Sanford, it's amazing.
This is why, this is a perfect example why I pushed the training, they pushed the, we just made, we just got the grant for the AEDs. So we're gonna get them out in our community and hopefully I can talk to some business owners and get some of the locations where people are gathered because it was critical. Thank you.
And as the department, we know that you're kind of pushing with all the CPR classes and all of that as well, so we've got that lined up.
So yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job, Ross.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll do the election results now. I have it under my update. I don't really want to move it down.
It's down here, sorry. I probably ought to, we ought to do the.
Election results first. Alright, so the, thank you all. The election results from June 11, 2024, we had 403 ballots cast. Remember, as I go down through these, that voters have the option to choose up to two on certain positions, so that's why the numbers will equal the 806. But for selectmen, our top runner was Thomas McGurty with 244 votes. Second elected was John Denikamp with 231 votes. Ron Waterhouse received 133 votes, and there were 198 blanks or miscellaneous writings. So congratulations to Tom and John. School committee, the top runner was Christina Gardner at 180 votes. Second was Teresa Minahan at 173 votes. Right behind her was Elizabeth Kittredge with 164 votes. Andrew Johnson received 111 votes and Catherine Johnson received 47, while there were 131 blanks or miscellaneous writings. For road commissioner, William Langley received 364 votes with 38, 39 excuse me, blanks. Just very quickly, the Democrats and the Republicans, there was very little, there was no contention on the Democratic ballot. There was 170 Democrats that participated in the election yesterday, I'm sorry, 140. And Republicans, the only contention was the representative to Congress and for Acton, it looks like Ron Russell was the choice. And there was 202 Republicans that participated in that primary. Ron Russell was running against Andrew P.I.A. N.T.I.B.O.S.I. Go ahead, take a shot at it. Andrew P., we call him. So those are your election results.
Okay, well, then we'll go down to then, election of chair. Liaison updates, so.
I nominate David Winchell for chair.
Second. All in favor? I'm staying, obviously.
Like that?
Okay, liaison updates.
Alright, so I just spent some time, I have talked to the board individually, kind of went through these because I don't want to surprise them too, too much, so I tried to reach out to all of them today. But kind of getting to know all of you and your strengths and what areas you really excel in, I put together a recommendation, and we've also added a couple of committees to try to make it fair. Now that we have five, we want to make sure that everybody has, has an area for them to kind of focus on. If David is going to continue to be the chair, then normally he would have, that chair would have one less committee because the chair is a job in his own, just answering the administrators' calls all day, so that generally takes up part of the day. So I've got it, David, I have you sticking with Rhodes because I think that with your background and expertise, I don't know how anyone else really can, can live up to that expectation, especially now that we've got road commissioner, one road commissioner on both sides, I think that Will appreciates your guidance and opinion most of the time, huh, Will? So Rhodes and Rhodes Committee have left David on. We've created a new one called Municipal Grounds. We have some projects going on and upcoming, this building, for example, David and I have been working very closely with the winning contractor, who has promised us that he will be here within two weeks, or that will be a new agenda item, but we'll talk about it at the end of the month. That, he's been working a lot with the excavating piece of the permits for the rec field, and then the transfer station excavation piece with Ed. So we created a liaison, I created a liaison called Municipal Grounds, which we would like to give to David, just for him to be our point of contact for these projects because it's kind of already started. So next would be Tom, and my vocabulary can never come up with the proper words to talk about how Tom excels in municipal finance, so I'm not even gonna try to come up with the words to put where he is when it comes to municipal finance. So we appreciate everything about his knowledge and certainly recommend that he stay with municipal finance, and I think that kind of ties hand in hand with Morton Finance, so I'd love him on those two. And also APAT, we've got some changes going on there, and Tom's really kind of worked with that, so I kind of need that continuation if the board sees fit. For Dan, moving around some of these other committees to get a fresh set of eyes on, I'd like you to take on the fire department. Wayne has ideas and likes to communicate and things that he wants to move forward. I think he'd have a good listening ear, that would be a good fit there. The rec committee, and also I know Conservation Force, we talked about, was really something he wanted to continue with, with the new committee, so. Ed's area of expertise is the transfer station. He did it for so many years in Rollinsford, and I know we've got the big project possibly going on, so we'll let you there. Mary Grant. And then a new committee, if you will, or a new department, is animal control officer. We're not sure what direction we're going with with the animal control officer, and I guess we could, just as good a time to talk about it. Chapley and Acton, we received two applications. It's been posted, it's been run in the newspaper, we've put it in a lot of places, we've done two applications, and Michelle and I, as town administrators, have met with both of those people. What we'd like to do now is pull one liaison from the select board and act, and one from Chapley, and have you got, have you two re-meet with Michelle and I on those, those two applicants and see what you think, and talk about whether it's in the best interest to keep the position as one, or there's been some talk about maybe separating them back into separate towns. No decisions or anything have been made, just some of the things have kind of come up, so regardless if you keep it together or separated, it's gonna be, we're gonna need some support, training a new person going forward, so I thought an ACO liaison would be a good idea, so. Put you there, and then last would be John. We thought we'd throw you right into the school department. Great place to start, warm and welcoming department that has lots to teach and offer. The planning board is really looking for, they've got some possible major changes coming up in the next year as we look at their entire audit, so I thought that might be something for you to learn. And then cemetery committee, which functioned very well on their own, as Tom will tell you, they just, you know, like.
Great group.
Yeah, they're a great group of volunteers and stuff, and so. That's my recommendation, certainly happy to hear from the board, talk to each of you individually, we made one swap, I think, between Dan and Ed, but other than that, did you have any thoughts, changes?
I think it sounds good.
And I tried to piece it where I thought you best thrive.
Make a motion to accept the liaison as presented?
Second. All in favor?
David, I have to ask, are you good with the ACO thing? I thought you kind of, it was more, I mentioned maybe the split.
Oh, the split's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, you may not even do it, I'm just kind of throwing out words.
Because I think it's worked relatively well, at least with the last, last one.
Yeah, and I think if we could give you more information on the candidates, of what they may or may want to do.
I think that's gonna be key.
Yeah, so, but it's certainly not, they're both willing to do it either way, together or separate.
When was the last time there was two separate?
Uh, it's been a long time, it's been a long time.
It's gotta be eight, nine years.
Oh, longer than that, well Frank did both.
I think, yeah, probably more like 20.
Yeah.
Boy, time's flying by.
I'll give you some more thoughts on that afterwards, but again, the board, we would never make decisions without full board consent.
Well, I think it's a good idea to have liaison meet with the other.
Yeah.
I mean, do you guys have a certain individual you think is better than the other, or do we have to do both of them?
We're gonna need to do both of them.
Okay.
Alright, so, we're not on my update yet, I'll, what's the one? So that was your election of chair and liaison update. So we're number three?
All set?
Yes.
Warrant and bill is all signed, all signed. Prove the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Men's of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the May 20, 2024, and the May 29, 2024 meeting minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Went through three sets of minutes?
You had two May 29s?
Right, because you had two different meetings, once was the executive session with the attorney, so I had to do them separately?
Okay. I was not present for that one anyways.
Okay, so, we had a two-on-one meeting, we had a closing, came back, so. Well, it's, there's only one item.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we went in and came out.
I didn't bring that one out because I just thought it was a repeat.
Yeah, no, so the May 29th that David has one line on, you made a motion to go in for legal counsel and you came out. That was the four o'clock.
Yeah, there were no decisions or anything, no.
Promise you the minutes are perfect.
Okay, so, move to the May 29th.
Both sets of the 29th and then one of the 22nd.
22nd.
Second. All in favor? Town administrator weekly update.
Alright, so we've covered the election results. Next is the reminder that the transfer station and the town hall will be closed next Wednesday, so there'll be no more selectman meeting. It is Juneteenth, new holiday, it's in the personnel policy. Wanted to let you know that the, I had the zoning audit and EMA job description on the agenda, but knowing that it would be a selectman's first meeting, I thought we'd table that until the end of the month, so, John, I'll give you a copy of the EMA director job description. The code officer will be coming to the meeting on the 26th as well to go through that audit update with you and let you know with the planning board thinks of it and kind of figure out what the next step is, so I'll give you both of those documents to read from 26. Sheriff's departments gave us a May monthly report. On May 3rd, a couple of deputies responded to a home on Milton Mills Road for a three-year-old that was found in a pond. She was hypothermic but conscious and breathing, she was transported to the hospital by act and rescue, and DHHS looks like was completed, the child was expected to make a full recovery. On May 5th, they responded to Blanding Lane in Chapley for a missing 10-year-old child with autism. Then K9 was responding to the area when the neighbor located the child in the shed, DHHS was notified. On May 5th, deputies responded to a tent off in the woods of Great Hollow Road in Chapley for an active domestic violence call. Individual was arrested on domestic violence, domestic violence criminal threatening and arson. On May 6th, Deputy Sandborn arrested an individual at his residence in Acton on a warrant for failing to comply with the Sex Offender Act. Bail was set at $750. May 7th, deputies responded to Newfield Road in Chapley for a serious personal injury crash. This was the 18-year-old female student from Massachusetts that was transported to Maine Medical, but she was expected to survive. May 9th, deputies arrested an individual for theft by unauthorized use. He was observed operating a stolen Jeep in Chapley. He also possessed control of a separate vehicle that was reported stolen earlier in the day, so he was charged. May 11th, deputies arrested an individual from Acton on three warrants outstanding, operating without a license, tampering with public records, and operating without a license and falsifying plates. May 13th, Deputy Sandborn investigated a gross sexual assault. May 13th, another deputy responded to a single vehicle crash of a utility box on Newfield Road in Chapley. The driver fled prior to emergency personnel arriving, they were able to locate the 17-year-old. The operator was issued for a, leaving the scene, sorry. And I apologize to just the public if you're hearing these for the first time, I tried to remove the names from them, that's why it takes me a second to figure out what's gonna come out. May 14th, deputies responded to a home on Newfield Road in Chapley for an unresponsive 75-year-old male who passed away after life-saving measures were unsuccessful. May 14th, responded to a vehicle accident near Fox's Ridge Road involving a tractor-trailer and a utility pole with wires down. Open trailer was full of hay and it caught fire, it was contained by the fire department until CMP could clean out the roadway. May 15th, deputies investigated a report of a criminal mischief on Emory Mills Road in Chapley, the youth storage facility. Someone tagged some of these buildings with paint, the investigation is ongoing. May 19th, deputies responded to a home on Fox's Ridge Road for a subject shooting a firearm too close to someone else's home. When responding, information was, when responding, information was obtained from an individual that was seen continuing to shoot. They made contact, they arrested the individual for conditions of release violation and being intoxicated while operating a firearm. May 19th, deputies arrested an individual who had just been evicted from a home on Cross Road and hadn't returned. Anyways, I'm back, he was evicted.
Question, did we decide to only read the ones from Acton, because there's a ton from Chapley in there?
Um, I mean, you don't, I mean, I certainly, if you don't want to hear the ones from, I will skip through.
I think it's good that we hear all the ones from Chapley, it's still good.
And it's a shared deputy, but last page and some are, most, all of these are Acton.
Okay, there we go.
So this deputy on 19th, I think David's got a point, doesn't look like they're all in Acton. February 19th, deputy responded to a motor vehicle crash on Route 109 in front of Willie's, the operator, blank, blank, was doing the burnout, it seems, leaving the restaurant, lost control and crashed, non-threatening, life injuries. May 20th, a subject from Winchell Lane in Acton reported that an individual was messaging her in violation of protection from abuse, so he has been arrested. May 26th, Deputy Sandborn responded to a home on H Road for a prowler, possible prowler. Turns out, the 17-year-old from Sanford, who had ridden his motorcycle to the address to see someone who was not there. He was charged with operating without a license, and the parents came and picked him up. Last month, one of the month was deputies responded to a home on Simon Rickel Road in Chapley for a disturbance between family members. The deputy was able to.
I don't remember the last month being quite as long.
That was a lot. Alright, EMA job descriptions, we talked about zoning. Salary increases would go into effect weekend ending in July. Am I safe to presume with the budget passed, the increases that were set forth is what we're creating updated time sheets for?
Yep.
For that, okay.
And what was that percentage?
Ugh, don't even ask that, Tom. Two point and a. Well, I was hoping one of you, we'd all remember together. Two point five.
10%?
Whatever's in the budget.
Yeah, I believe it was 2.5, but I would double check, okay. Just wanted to make sure. That's all I have, sir chairman.
That's all? Okay, thank you. Department head committee chair updates. You got any updates there?
He's on the agenda.
Oh, you're on the agenda anyway, so Will? Okay, cool. Old business, not new business, fire department request.
In your packet, you should have this 2024 end of year plan. John, I should have warned you, if you keep the packet in order, when I hand it to you, you'll be in good shape.
So yeah, there it all is. I wasn't expecting the June 1st spending freeze. I keep track of everything pretty well, I thought, and we're planning on making these repairs and purchases. Some of it was dependent on the grant, which I was waiting for reimbursement, so, and I was also waiting for quotes, which I have one additional over here for the work on the pump on Fortune 2, I only got one copy of it, I just printed it up, printed it off before I came over here.
Let's just go through these, so they know what we're approving. So the first one's a water pump, right?
Yeah, so that's, that's the quote for that.
So this is 6296, how much is your quote?
That one is $7,000. So I'm recommending going with the one I submitted, and on that request for $6,296.67 by Rebel Truck, which is who we're using moving forward on all the truck service work.
That's what we just had, fix your pump, didn't you?
Not, not them, they quoted it, but they were buying the pump from that, that one, so they were cheaper because.
Middleman, yeah.
Yeah, so, but Rebel Truck is who we're, is doing all the service work, all the stuff moving forward, what I budgeted for for next year.
So did this water pump just go, or?
Yeah, so we were operating out of wood fire, and it was acting like it wasn't getting gas, which like throttling up, coming down, so I thought it was sucking air. Turns out, it was throwing the belt, so the belt went, and so either the shaft seized first and then the belt went, or the belt got caught, because when we took it apart, it was all mangled in there. And like other things, because of its age, they don't make easy parts. So they gotta take the pump side off of that and they're gonna put a new one on it. That's still compatible with the motor we have and everything that we currently have.
So you had 7171 in there, this pump went, you got two quotes.
Yeah.
Did I make any comments on that?
So this is the repair old pump, right?
This new pump?
Older pump, yes. It's, it's the one that's on the Fortune truck, so that we've only had that Fortune truck probably six, Dave, when he was the fire chief, so three, six, yeah, probably six-ish, seven years.
Are they repairing and they're putting a new pump in?
So what's the new, what would a new pump cost?
I don't know, I'm pretty sure when we bought that one, when Dave bought that one, if I remember correctly, it was well over five grand, because I'm pretty sure it got sold to.
It was, it was just over five grand?
Yeah.
How long ago was that?
Six-ish, seven years ago.
Yeah, six, seven years ago.
So, I only imagine, I'm just speculating based on my knowledge, that's probably a $10,000 pump all day long now.
Probably.
So we're gonna, so you're looking to spend what, 6296?
Yeah, to go back in service. Right now, like, right now I got a portable pump making the truck work, so. It's not, it's the end of the world, but I want to get it fixed.
What I would just get to is, you know, I mean, I bought a laser, I got two years out of it, I sent it up to the shop to have it, for some reason it stopped working, they told me it's gonna cost more to fix it than buying a new one. If there was a little bit extra for a new one.
I only assume based on these guys and the call they worked into, they would have told me it would have been cheaper. I didn't physically look at it, I can make a phone call, it's to get that answer, but I don't know.
When you say older pumps and this and that, I mean, I would prefer.
Is there any warranty with the, with the repair? Because the new one, I assume would have a warranty?
Yeah, I don't think, I think it's gonna be like the other one. It's a, I mean, I don't have a warranty, maybe, it's not, it's not. There's nothing indicated on this.
I doubt as a repair, it's gonna have any warranty. Where a new one might, do you think there may be a four thousand dollar difference between the two? Six versus ten?
Potentially, yeah. I mean, I could get a price on a whole new pump, but that's...
You said there was a belt, I had?
Yeah, it's belt driven or shaft, or on the motor. The motor's fine, I mean, I'm not gonna kill the motor, so that's why I...
I suggest you get a quote for a new one. Let's find out what it is. Is that gonna be a problem timing-wise?
Uh, well, I mean, it's not a problem right now timing-wise with the budget. That's all I was trying to do.
But you got extra money in your budget, correct? You got something left.
Well, I mean, not...
I think what we could do here is on a contingency, you know, given a pump, if it's a couple thousand dollar one by a brand new one, I would prefer you doing that with a warranty. So we, we could make that decision tonight, saying, okay, you know, you're asking for sixty-two ninety-six, we can, we can say you can use up to eight, nine thousand dollars. You know, we can make that decision tonight. Okay, and then you can, so we'll hold you up.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Big a pump is that? A Miguel pump?
It's a high, high-pressure pump. So I think it's like a hundred ninety-something gallons of minutes. Similar to the Mach 3 pump. It's obviously meant the pump distance, because it's on the Porsche. It's on the Porsche truck, so it's not gallons, it's distance with the pressure. Which we are dropping it down, if I go with the repair, dropping it down a little bit, just, just to save some dollars, because I replace exactly what's on there with that pressure, which we think is probably what jammed us up, because that thing is spinning so fast and we're not flowing enough water all the time, that it jammed up. So that part of the problem. But they recommended dropping down the size of the pump and not have that problem.
So a relief valve on it?
There's a gauge. There's a, it's got a packing like a traditional big truck pump.
No relief valve?
Not, not that I know of. I'd have to look at it.
What I've been finding, I've been losing, I've lost a couple of mine, and what happened, according to a auto pumping, and what happens is, is the initial prime, it smokes, it smokes and...
Gets hot before it flows the water.
So I don't know, I don't know what you guys think, but I mean, I don't wanna hold him up, but I think that's...
No, I don't either. I'm just, you know, if it makes sense to get a new one, I would, you know, at this stage...
I like that.
Putting, putting six thousand dollars in a used pump and a new one is ten, or in that range.
That's just my guess.
It's just a guess. I, I don't know. I probably would go for a new one myself.
You might be surprised. It might not be a whole lot of difference.
Is it possible for us to just, Dan, you're the liaison, right? Can we just authorize either a repair or acquisition of a new one and ask Dan to manage that with the chief?
Yeah, I will, sure.
How's that, is that all right, we do that?
Do we have a...
And I wouldn't put a number on it.
Yeah, we just have to be careful, because I'm looking at his month-ending report. Salary's gonna come out of it.
Do you have a current month-ending report?
I have it in front of me.
From what?
From May 30th. So that's what I'm saying.
Can I get a copy of it?
No.
Well, I mean, you want to make, be smart. I'm gonna make a comment, so I know that you haven't seen it yet, but my job as town administrator is to make sure that my board sees it first.
I should just work with Dan and money's there. It's fine with me.
I just thought it...
If we can, if we can afford it, that's reasonable. I prefer a new pump. I don't know how we all feel.
Just giving you the option.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if you can make it work with the numbers.
So I, I guess, you know, just so we can solve this while he's here, the board want me to release these, so, because you know Mark Roy's reports weren't right today, and you and I looked at those. Do we want, you want me to report, to release these to the, let me finish, to the department heads, to the road committee, to everybody before the board sees them? So that we don't get, because I don't want him on that.
Well, it was, it was, I just obviously, I have a May 30th cheat year, because that's the only one I had at the time of putting this report.
Well, May 30th is what I have.
No, excuse me, sorry.
Your April, right. So the way that works is the month has to end, Mark has to be given time to balance, do all, do what he does, and I bring it to you guys at your first meeting. That's how it's worked. Now, if you want to change that so that they see it before you, I'm happy to give it to them the same day it comes in, but I don't want it.
Yeah, to be fair, it wouldn't normally be a problem, but we're obviously at the end of the month, or at the end of the fiscal year, so trying to run the numbers and calculate what I have, don't have, or any department head, makes it tough by waiting, right? And then obviously, we're jammed up, because...
Yeah, I understand your, your, I mean, we, but we've been doing this for, oh shit, I was road commissioner back then when we were doing it, and so this isn't new.
It's not, it shouldn't be.
The reason why we're doing this is, you know, we, we do this every year so that we don't have this jam up on June 30th. All the bills flowing and all at once, and, or bills coming in two months later and this and that, so what we try to, so what you're doing tonight, I have no issue with, because, you know, and we're gonna make sure these bills or whatever you get is gonna be in before June 30th.
No, we're not about the report.
Well, I understand, I'm getting to that. I was just, I was, I was on a roll here, Jen.
I know, but you don't need that.
But honestly, at the end of the day, if Mark Roy sends us that, those numbers, I have no issue with it.
I would just release it myself. I wouldn't...
Okay, and that's not, I've gotten from the past, so...
And if there's a problem, I'll deal with it after the fact. If we got a problem with a side of the apartment, there's an error. We'll let you know that there's an error. But still, you may find one, because they can't do anything with it, unless we approve it.
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly.
So going forward, the day they come in from him, you want me to...
As long as, as long as they're approved by you, as long as you think they're finding it.
What if she's saying one was wrong and she doesn't approve it? So this wouldn't have gone either way then, so it's still...
It's just been passed by access that goes...
Which is fine, right, totally fine. Totally, I wasn't trying to make a problem.
No, 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 no.
It's, it's up here.
I mean, like you said, it doesn't normally, it's not usually a problem until the last month of the year. Yeah, so it's not a big deal.
So what did he say? I'll work with Jen to figure out what numbers he has. It'll come up with a, a kind of a cap of what we're gonna look for if he wants to.
So somewhere around ten thousand, what we're thinking of doing.
Yeah.
All right, so next, that, next is his front tires.
So utility truck, uh, just went, I just had it go to run Ford for recall work on the front end. Why was there, they recommended two front tires and alignment. Obviously, I've noticed the front tire's wearing, but we have this problem with the 550 series on almost every vehicle in the industry right now. For whatever reason, Ford is wearing tires. So I don't know if it's related to the recall work, but it needs two front tires, and I was ready to do it, and I would've done it, but here we are. So I'm actually just been, I believe the tires, I put a rough number on here. We put tires on the front end a few months ago. It was like eleven hundred dollars, I think, for the tires, and another hundred and fifty or something dollars for the alignment, so I just put a rough price here for fifteen hundred. We go through central tire, the same place we've always gone.
You're getting the same price on those?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
It's a Sullivan tire, I don't know.
On set valve?
The next one, so these are these intake valves I've been talking about for the last couple of years in my budget presentations. The prices aren't getting any cheaper. Probably five years ago, maybe not quite that far. Rick was the chief. Either way, we bought ones like seventeen hundred bucks. They're now up to twenty-eight fifty. I need three of them. I'm looking to purchase two of them, where I received a grant for the cold water protective gear and ropes of twenty-nine hundred. I am trying to buy two of them right now, where we got reimbursed for that money. So fifty-seven hundred bucks total for those two valves. I have two quotes in your pack, or not in your package, but I have it here for the same vendors we used. The last time when I asked for the roll hitch valve, the third one didn't get back to me, but the third one is, um, was a higher price on that, and it's from the same manufacturer that makes these ones. The three quotes, like I said last time, the one vendor that I'd like to go with is the one that sells, sells in the most volume, so therefore, they get the biggest break, and it's, uh...
So all, all these, so we don't have to through every single one, all of this stuff that you've already had on budget line that you already prepared to purchase?
I was planning on purchasing, correct?
Okay, so...
It's just a matter of whether they go up to bid or not. Some of them are open policy, so you gotta... So you said you have big intake?
They're open policy by, if I combine them together. By one time, like, yeah.
You're buying together.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the only vendor that can give us the biggest break. It really is FireTech of safety, they're the only ones that sell that brand, not the only ones that sell that brand, but the only ones that can sell it at the price. And then the cheapest, the last two things that we purchased for that.
So you have the quotes for the intake from now?
Yep.
So just for the board note, so the auditor doesn't want a CD, so we attach them to the minutes, so that we're making, the auditor's making sure you're following your own policies. And I didn't, he said he gave you one that's floating around somewhere. I need that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. You guys want to see that?
All right, should've made copies of these.
So this is the one, for the previous item, this, this is that got approved or no? That's your second?
That's the second quote for the repair.
Okay, where's, so that's on the...
So seven to eight versus sixty-two something?
Yeah.
So this is the one they're approving?
Yes. Yeah, but do the repair. Based on...
All right, and then for the intakes, we're gonna go with FireTech because they're quite a bit lower.
Yes. They're five, we're picking quotes around almost five hundred dollars here.
All right, so if you'll move through this next items.
The next stuff is just personal protective equipment. I'm looking at my reflective vest issue.
Was this all on your budget?
Yeah.
It was. I, I think we can move on.
I think so.
Wait, okay, moving on?
Yeah.
I have no issue with that.
It's in your budget, why not?
I calculated the numbers like I told the time manager when I came up to give, drop this request off. I had, was working off April 30th numbers. I didn't have the updated sheet, so...
And the main numbers I received on Monday on our invoice.
Yeah, yeah, so now, obviously, all that information will be there, but I didn't have it at the time, and that goes with the number that you did in that.
So what about the radios as far as going, going over bid? And the other one, the cardiac monitors?
The cardiac monitor battery, or I purchased one, but it's a thousand and one dollar. I purchased one a couple of months ago. I'm looking to buy another one, so we have two brand new ones on the truck. The ones we have are probably four, five, six years. I keep reconditioning them, and I can only recondition them so far, so looking to buy another one, so there'll be two on that device.
So is there a bid from a couple of months ago that you want them to reference, or you're not, you're not?
Uh, I don't, yeah, I don't have, I already submitted that invoice from the first purchase. I don't have that copy on me.
And then what about the radios? So there's...
So that was the purchase that's already been done, and the second one's gonna be for the same amount?
Yes.
Okay, so you have the one for...
We went up to bid the first time?
Okay.
Yep. It was a thousand and one dollar, and it's the sole cardiac monitor that I can only get from one vendor, it's that same...
So you got a waiver on that one?
Right.
I just have to be, I, I know it feels, but I have to answer to the auditor, so...
It's all good.
I gotta understand it.
Totally fine. Is, I have individual codes, quotes, they obviously add up, one of them adds up to over the price, but it's all stuff I had budgeted for and planned to do. I only can get it from one place, and that's Southern Communications. It does all, all our radio work, so...
So when you tell, like you're talking about all of the amount where you have to put out to bid, or...
Yes, that's the...
Yes.
How much do you... How much business do we do with that?
With them?
Southern Maine, I predict.
Southern Communications, uh, they hold all the licenses for all our communications equipment, emergency communications equipment. They do all our radio service work, all our new service work, pretty much all our wiring that's done on Airbras, so like, let's say I had an outlet, so I can plug something in the charge, they do all the wiring, truck side, all our radios.
So what do you think we spend there a year? Just a guess.
New stuff and repairs, five to ten grand easily.
Yeah, is that the only?
And that's just what I spend. That doesn't, doesn't mean everybody, like, where our communication style is all through them, the repeater, the Apple Radio.
Is that a sole source? Is there another vendor?
Around here, yes, yep.
It is, huh?
Yep, they're pretty much.
If it's possible, we oughta, I'm saying right away, we oughta bid it out if we can and get a competitive price. And, you know, do that every three or four years and just keep them on a renewed cycle. But if they're the only vendor?
They're the only vendor that deals with the ICOM radios that we have. We could certainly spend a heck of a lot more money on a different brand.
Changing them all up?
Right.
But the problem is, we kind of touched on it already, but between the repeaters and everything else.
And the other fact, the other fact is, right, we, over the years, Acton has built such a relationship with them that if I call them right now and say, uh... Stretch further. Then say, uh... Totally lost my train of thought there.
If you call them right now?
Oh, yeah, if I call them right now, they're, they're headed up here to fix our stuff, right? That's the relationship we build with them over the years. Anything we need, they, they drop, and...
Okay.
And they're also pretty good with the highway department. Back in the day, they put radios on all our substance stores, but they were really good to us.
Where's the call? Where's the call?
Seven.
Oh.
So, uh...
Quote my text.
So do we have all the quotes that we're gonna need?
I mean, it sounds like, yeah, you've got waivers on the last three or four, based on what you're saying to us, so...
So at the end of the day, um, you're looking to spend, what, is it total?
Of all of that was...
You might change... Twenty to twenty-five. Twenty, depending on whether you go with a new pump or rehab pump.
So do you want to make a motion there that to allow them to spend up to twenty-five grand?
Why don't we just authorize the list here? And then there's an exception for the pump.
Yep.
Fair enough. So I'll make a motion that we authorize all the individual purchases contained in the attorney prepared by the chief, and provide, uh, discretion to be exercised by Dan in consultation with Jen, make sure there's sufficient funds in the budget to cover either Make sure there's sufficient funds in the budget to cover either a new purchase if we need it. Fair enough?
Yep. Do we hear a second?
Second.
All, all in favor? Just whatever you can do, if you can have the, uh, measures, make sure that those invoices come as soon as possible, cause we, we don't want them coming in. I, when I work with you, we always have one vendor that send their culverts like a month after they were due.
I'll, I'll, I'll put it in the month. All I have here, all next week.
And next year, if we can do this in May, that would be great.
Yeah, I gotta get them with the grants.
And this whole thing will go away, alright?
Alright, and thank you for sending your note to my description.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Wes.
Thanks.
Okay, we're down to personal property tax write-offs.
In front of you, you have, um, a packet of outstanding personal property taxes now. I put the last page on top because that's really what we need to reference, was brought before us from, from Mark Roy. Between two thousand and six and two thousand and ten, you have about seven thousand dollars in real estate, uh, personal property outstanding taxes now. This stems from a four-year period when the town of Acton was, was taxing some personal property primarily at the Apple Valley campground. They were giving campers down there the option of either paying excise on their camper or paying personal property. We got a previous assessing company involved in going down and trying to assess them. Um, it, you know, if you, if you look at, if you flip through it, you can see on the location for all of the notes, all of them say ABG for Apple Valley. It really turned into a mess, it was not recommended, recommended by the auditor. They were all too small amounts to do collections, the most would leave mid-season. There was no follow-up, you can't put leaves on these types of personal properties. They've been carried over on the books for years. Uh, the recommendation is that we just write those off. Um, you'll see thirteen, fifteen, and eighteen also have small balances, a dollar fifty-one, twelve dollars and twelve cents. We're not recommending you write off twenty-two and twenty-three because those are our actual personal property taxes we're still trying to collect. Completely different, we're no longer assessing these types of campers. So the motion we're looking for is for that number of handwriting down there.
I have a question on the back page, the last couple of things, they don't look to be similar in line as the other ones.
Yeah, so like we look at the scientific gain, um, that was us, um, well, that was twenty-twenty-three, so that one we're still collecting. So see that you go by the year, um, so we're not looking for a write-off in anything in twenty-two, twenty-three, so, um, like the wild communications, well, that one's a balance of a dollar fifty-one, that's, we're not looking. So we're trying to find the first one, cause none of those are, would be on your write-off list, Dan.
What is personal property?
So personal property, statewide towns have the right to either do all personal property or none. They could do personal property on farm equipment, on campers that aren't registered. Um, they do them on, any leases are usually personal property, if, um, gas station pumps, there's, it's a big definition. But Acton doesn't assess personal property, they haven't for years. They only did the Apple Valley because of the motor vehicles.
But you got, you got two years here, twenty-two and twenty-three.
So this is beta, that's the business tax exemption. Remember, there are companies that file personal property with us, they want us to bill them Coca-Cola signs. The company, if they have it in the town, they're required to pay personal property. And that's what the rest of these are.
What?
Yes, and so there's companies, any type of lease, yes. They file it with us by April first, anything that's leased at some of these bigger stores, like the, the Trading Post had some on there, you can see that, Trading Post computer. That's a lease, so they're required to pay a tax to the town, the company pays it to the town.
Do, do, do all the businesses get assessed on the same basis or is it just certain?
We only do personal property for those that file, that file for us. We have very little value in personal property.
Actually, I don't, I don't, that don't make any sense to me.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, everybody pays personal property tax and nobody does.
It's on leased equipment, they pay personal property on leased equipment. Let me, I have to get Dennis on the phone to better explain this to them.
Does this mean if I had a, a tractor and I leased it, I would pay tax on that?
No, it's never been on tractors, the only one.
Well, I didn't get the idea, you know.
See, you know, the, the whole personal property tax thing, it's like Sanford, okay? We use Sanford for instance, Sanford does his personal property tax because they want everything, so if you have a business and you have dirt piles in your yard or you're a concrete contractor, you got septic tanks and all that, they literally do an inventory of you once a year and get personal property tax on your inventory, okay? And, um, guys like myself with excavators, why do you think I, you know, I wouldn't bring them home if I was living in Sanford, I didn't want to show them, I don't want them tracking all that unless they're registered. Okay, the, the problem I have with that whole per, personal property tax is, you know, they're, they're not going out to go with the brand new lawn mowers and everything there.
There's, there's something more to it, I'm clearly missing, I've reached out to them this meeting, but it's, it's a good example.
And that, that, the business stuff?
Yeah, there has to be, every year in your tax commitment, you have, and this is really the treasurer's piece, you have the beta exemption that you take. That's for these small businesses, but for this nine-page document, the first eight pages are all.
I'll make a suggestion, why don't we agree, or I'll make a motion to write every month through two thousand and eighteen and maybe Jennifer at our next meeting could just come back and explain to us, you know, what we do when I do the personal property.
So look at the company, okay, I'll have something.
So I'll make a motion that we write off, uh, personal property tax due for fiscal year two thousand and six to two thousand and eighteen in the amount of seven thousand zero zero seven three five, I get that right?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Oh, so, okay, so as the year is, is coming to an end, these are all kind of different, but they're different dates, so unfortunately we have to do them separately. First one, I'm gonna make a motion, we can sign them and do them all at once?
So this is a motion to appoint J C Seventy as the code enforcement and local plumbing officer for a period of one year ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five. Did I get that right?
Correct.
Okay, we'll get a second.
All in favor?
Our master, we just appointed him already for June twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, we just got appointed.
I did see the photo, yes.
Yeah, there's stuff.
You had another one now, make them as we're all signing them? To appoint Robert Anderson as the constable for a period ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five. Second.
All in favor? He's been a constable for quite a while.
Yes. Happy to air, he's gonna stick around one more year.
Yep.
Uh, to appoint John Fatula as the forest and conservation committee member, okay? For a period ending, for the, uh, term ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five.
Can I?
All in favor? Okay.
To appoint Victoria Erickson as health officer for a term ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five. Second.
All in favor?
To appoint, uh, John Qua as a member of the planning board for a term ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Do it through the. Oh, no.
Free your.
Okay.
Free your appointments for plan board.
All in favor?
To appoint Christopher Whitman as a member of the planning board for a term ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-seven. Second.
Yeah, that's up.
All in favor?
To appoint Andrew Johnson as an alternative planning board member, uh, for a term ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Second. All in favor?
To appoint Roger Peralta as a planning board alternate member, uh, for a term ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-seven. Okay.
All in favor?
Can you just mention the Warren Arco? I need to mention the Warren Arco, that changed that to three-year terms.
Oh, yes.
I think that.
Okay, um, the town's clerk tax collector is now a three-year appointment?
Has been.
Has been. So, uh, this would be for Jennifer Rue for a town clerk tax collector for the term ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Several years ago, the town voted to change the town clerk tax collector and treasurer to three-year terms rather than one, so.
Second.
All in favor?
That's it?
More coming at your next meeting, for those who haven't been heard from and who are ready to move forward.
You do all the finishing?
Okay. Thank you, Dan. I like you, Dan.
What are you saying?
He keeps you straight.
Okay, uh, order of municipal officers.
Uh, so every year, the select board pursuant to Title Thirty-six, nine oh six, need to sign an order instructing the town clerk tax collector and treasurer to direct all payments, uh, to the oldest year first, any outstanding delinquent taxes first on said property in chronological order, beginning with the oldest. However, no such payment may be applied to any tax for which you made an application.
So, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the order of municipal officers, um, which directs when payments are to be applied against outstanding balances as referenced by Jennifer just now.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. I guess I got a little over the points.
Yeah, really.
Trying to confuse me or something?
If it does, that time you. Trying to space length up a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, where we're at now, we're down to propane contract.
Uh, so Superior, who was down east, they've changed names, so they've been Superior, uh, was our propane company last year. Um, they have presented another contract to the select board for consideration. Uh, this is one of those conversations that we have each year, you know, I can tell you that it's a very good rate based on what they've given us. I think I told the board what it is because I don't want to announce it should you decide you want to go out to bid. Um, I have told the chair, um, and it is as, you know, very reasonable for a year. I can announce it or? Oh, you all have in part of you.
So before you announce it, because I do know.
I guess, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was in the packet, so now we know.
Yeah, they do know, yeah.
So.
I, I honestly.
I don't know why you would go out to bid, it doesn't slow the number.
We tried that one year and we did it back by it.
We've had no problems with them, they come to all of our locations.
I'll make a motion. Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion, uh, to award a propane contract to Superior Plus Propane uh, for eight thousand gallons, is an estimate? Uh, at a per gallon price of one dollar seven nine nine cents. So, um, this will expire four thirty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Do you need, how many sentences you need here, Jennifer?
Three.
Okay. Three?
Majority, far and the majority.
You have done a free truck for seven days.
Yeah, we've never had any problems with any power stations, transportation anywhere.
My water heater's in a propane store, letting it use an appropriate cost somewhere.
At that place, I'd stop burning wood.
The bell's a pretty expensive, I don't have a bell.
What's Smiler to do when she blows down? Oh, I'll find something.
She'll probably be training more dogs, like peacocks. They're rescuing other animals.
So we got mass gathering permit.
Yeah, so Tom has, uh, within the car show that the Royal Thunder is going to be doing at the Acton Fairgrounds on June twenty-second. Uh, they've met all the requirements set forth by the town in regards to the insurance, paying the fee.
So they've submitted the application, paid all the fees, so we need a motion to approve a, uh, mass gathering permit.
June twenty-second?
Yeah, uh, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. They've met all the requirements, I think that covers it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
And the Thunder appreciates it, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Um, so John, there are only four signatures on there because you technically submitted it before our fit selection started, so. There's no line for you, but I promise that the next one you'll get a line.
Oh, this one?
Yes, it's the one that.
Okay, we are, uh, G, J, Brockland Management LLC Commercial Hall of Renewals.
So I've been speaking with, um, transfer station superintendent about these commercial hall renewals because the last couple of years have been rocky, to say the least, in getting them done before June thirtieth. So we've been very clear and firm that there's no renewals, no dumping come July first, that these aren't done. So, um, tonight's agenda is the J A Brockland Management, uh, he has paid the fee. He's submitted, uh, the insurance, we have a list of customers as required, so this one should be good to go.
What is this, uh, uh, provide? Does it allow them to?
It allows them to collect, to offer their service, to pick up trash in Acton and then allows them to dump.
Okay, okay.
For their commercial hauler. And we do have an ordinance that regulates this, so.
Okay, um, make a motion to approve a application for a commercial hauler permit to J A Brockland Management LLC. He's been paid, all other requirements have been met.
So here, second. All in favor?
I'm gonna abstain from that.
Okay.
That's cause.
Yep, yep. Okay, resignation.
We received, uh, a resignation from Michael Corey, our APAT director. He notified me last week that, uh, his life been, his life scheduled between work and a new job. Family, um, has just taken more time than he anticipated, so he's given us a two-week notice. Um, we are working closely with Dan Crampitz, who is what we would call the second in line, second in command, um, to run that station and ask. I've asked, uh, Dan, I'm emailing with Mike to make sure that we have all the passwords, everything, everything that we need to keep this channel functioning while we advertise the position, so, um, I'm hoping, cause there's only one week left, I'm hoping that you'll, um, appoint and agree to Dan Crampitz as the intern. The job will get posted, uh, it will run for the same normal couple of weeks that all other jobs do, but obviously with Mike Lee's at the end of next week, needs to make sure everything is still going, so.
So this interim appointment would be entirely a permanent, uh, individual is hired?
Correct.
So do we have an appointment sheet for him?
Well, he's a hired employee, so there's really not an appointment, we're just gonna hire him as an intern, APAT director.
I'll keep your appointment.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry, you're appointing him, you're hiring him, really, you're right, you're hiring him.
Okay, uh, do you guys have any questions or just concerns?
I think we're fortunate, we have Dan in there to pick this up.
Oh, it's a great idea.
So we'll, uh, bring him, we'll hire him as the intern, we'll, the pay and everything will be carried over and then we'll post it and we'll have an executive session once we have some candidates. With, um, Thomas E. Epat.
Yes.
I guess we're down to public comment, any public comment? I don't see anybody, well.
I just have, I just wanna give a thank you to Jen and the staff here and all the election volunteers. We always run a smooth election, which is always good, um, so thank you for all the hard work that you folks put in and everyone who volunteered.
Yes, we have a great crew of election workers, some new ones this time, a couple of hiccups, but nothing that we couldn't sort out, but proving and everything went great at the end of the night. So I'm very lucky to have Sheila Conway, Virginia Shea as the wardens that continue and all the warden clerks, so, thank you.
Congratulations to the people who won the election. Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn at seven oh eight PM.
So, next meeting, no meeting next week, but I have to see the Thursday to sign.
We, we'll be at Thursday to sign, right now?
It's probably, I'll get calls.
Okay, all in favor? Okay.